All right, it's October 17, 2023. It's 6:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. Invocation, Annette, can you say the invocation, please?
This isn't really a microphone, but.
No, but for the folks online.
Father God, I just thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful weather. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this city. And Lord, we just thank you for the wisdom and the guidance that you give us as we act on the city's behalf. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call in quorum. Start at the end.
Scott Nelson presents.
Oh, here, Annette.
Lucio here.
Jerry Wade here.
And Mayor Michael Goan here. And I'm being told that Mike Vargas is on his way.
No, no, he's sick.
He's outside, so he's not making it.
Or not the flu, the stomach bug.
So then we still have quorum. Number five, public commons. Who'll say anybody signed it?
We have Michael Vargas.
You can just state your name and your address.
My name is Michael Vargas. I live at 62 Los Amigos. First of all, I want to thank all of you for being public officials. I know it's not an easy job. I always respect people who are willing to be elected officials because this is how we solve conflict in a democracy, hopefully, as opposed to throwing stones at each other. So thank you for that. I'm getting up to comment on three things in regard to the ditch project. First of all, I want to discuss why the Harlingen Country Club gave a temporary restraining order. Secondly, I wanted to discuss the fact that Kay Conley was not authorized, did not have authority to sign the temporary easement that she signed. And finally, to encourage you to come to a cooperative solution with the country club. Now, first of all, the temporary restraining order was filed because people may not realize this, but the club was involved in many meetings with the city, trying to come up with a solution everybody could live with. We didn't know what you guys were going to do until you voted last month, and you had alternatives that were more palatable to the club, and you chose not to do those. I'd also point out that you were initially told to box culvert on 13, which is the single biggest problem we have. That's not what it costs. It costs more like $400,000. A half a million dollars is not a rounding error. And I think there's a possibility that you could maybe value engineer, do something. The club is willing to work. But we can't just have, a golf course is 18 holes, not 17 holes. The second issue that you may not be aware of, and that I only became aware of a few weeks ago. There's nothing in the board minutes authorizing Kay Conley to sign that temporary easement. And more importantly, the bylaws of Harlingen Country Club state that the members have to vote on something like that. There are over 200 households in the city of Palm Valley that are members of the Harlingen Country Club. We are co-owners. And I would ask you to consider our private property rights as co-owners of the Harlingen Country Club. And that will never happen again, that an easement will go by without a vote of the membership. But you guys now know that, and I'm asking you to consider working with the club, or else you're telling 200 households it doesn't matter that they didn't vote on an easement that they should have had a right to vote on. Now, I still believe there is a cooperative solution to this. There are ways that we can handle it. The 13th toll is the biggest issue, and I highly, highly encourage you to do that. Otherwise, you tear the community apart instead of bringing it together. And there will be more drainage projects to come, and you're going to have to work with the club again. And it would be much better to do it in a cooperative fashion, and I still believe that that can happen. And there's an election next May. If you guys choose the cooperative path, those of you who are up for reelection, I suspect all of you will get reelected. I'm not even sure you have an opponent if you come to a cooperative solution. But if you just decide it's we're going to go this way, and it's our way or the highway, it's going to be a huge campaign issue. And the election's going to be happening when there's bulldozers tearing up the back nine. I don't want to see that happen. I highly, highly implore you to consider a cooperative solution. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nobody else on the document?
Okay. Anybody else online? Time's for discussion number six, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15, 2023, a special meeting of August 24, 2023, August 26, 2023, August 29, 2023, and September 13, 2023.
So September 13 is not in the packet?
No, so September 13 and August 26 are not in the packet.
Which ones?
The 26, which is the Saturday workshop, and then the regular meeting, are the 13. I request that the items be taken.
15. 15 and 24, is that all we have?
The last two are included.
Should be the 15, the 24, and the 29.
No, I've scoured it, so. So I'll make two motions here. First motion I'll make is to table the minutes from August 26th and September 13th until our next regular meeting.
Okay, I hear a motion.
I got a second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and a second.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 15th, August 24th, and August 29th as presented.
Okay, I have a motion on the, and do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, discussion and possible action to approve the contract for the fire service between the city of Harlingen and the city of Palm Valley. While we held out, because we were looking at the, all the people that were fighting their taxes, and of course, the county must have some kind of crystal ball that they looked into the future and knew what the exact amount was going to be months ago. So they're sticking to that number. It did not go down, even though people were appealing their valuations. So, there's the contract. It's basically a year-to-year contract, and the only thing that's changed is that amount. It's based on 10 cents per $100 valuation on 153 million or something like that it came out to, but the amount that we're going to pay is $153,416.06 for your annual fee to have fire service.
$153,000. You have a question?
Sure.
Like, I got my tax statement, and I just protested. I mean, I just got to protest a couple of weeks ago. But it was, it did not reflect on my statement, so now I'm going to have to go up there. So I'm just wondering how many other people that that affected, and if this is an accurate number?
I was looking at some online, because I was writing some listings, and they're showing, some of them are showing us discounts. I don't understand why they're showing us discounts. So that's going to be a question that we're going to have to ask the appraiser industry.
Yeah, because ultimately, the price, which is the $153,000.
Reflects those valuations.
And it's different. So I talked with the mayor about this, and I was like, well, it could be that our last payment is reduced because we pay it, I believe, quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah.
So maybe the last payment's reduced after those adjustments are final. And then we can address, dress it prior to July on this.
So can we?
So we would have to notice if we want to negotiate prior to next July.
Yeah, so we've had between now and July, we already have a game plan in place where if we see that go down, I am going to challenge it and have it reduced, because that's just ridiculous. How in the world could they know months in advance what the grand total was going to be after all the appeals?
Well, so I'm thinking they did it without making the adjustments.
It is, but yeah, but they do notice that there's, there are adjustments. There's under review. If you look at the attachment, under review, it would reduce it a couple of grand, I think, if every single under review was granted. Annual price for the fire service would be reduced by 2,300 bucks, I think we kept that, 2,300. Something like that. So it's just a matter of getting it, be ready, maybe like, a meeting in May.
So we can protest if the city tell us, no, we ought to have a contract in place, because I, and you read more contracts than I. I didn't see something in here where it says it's, that final payment's adjustable, or we could argue that.
It's in July. Yeah.
It's based on the exhibit, and the exhibit includes the adjusted amount, so there's an argument to make that it's contemplated that there might be a reduction in the amount, but it is, the contract is based on the appraisers' tax total value of that.
Volce was calling almost daily, trying to get the updated amount.
I'm sure, yeah.
They finally issued that, that amount.
But that will certainly be in.
Exact same one.
What I'm suggesting is perhaps May, June, if not earlier, so we beat the July
Notice window, yeah.
To say we're going to negotiate this.
You need to make a note of that.
On my calendar. So any other questions or discussion?
Oh, I do. So what is it that we budgeted for?
Uh, $153,000.
Oh, we did?
Yes, okay. Yeah, we didn't have a choice, so.
It kind of feels like that, yeah. Mainly because the alternative would be to hire our own or hire a private fire department, and there's not very many private fire departments in the country.
Right.
I mean, I know one, Royal Metro. You could do that, but that relies on volunteers. You still need a chief and somebody to, and a truck itself is going to cost you well over what we're paying this.
Probably like a three-year, four-year.
So, yeah, I agree.
And GMO insurance would go through the roof.
Right. And so then, the motion would be to accept the contract with the city of Harlingen for fire services in the amount of $153,416.06 paid over four installments.
As drafted.
As drafted. Okay, okay, so then that's my motion to accept it.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Number eight, discussion, possible action to approve the resolution to deny the Texas gas service rate increase that was proposed. As you all remember, a few meetings back, we had entered in a resolution to join a coalition to fight the rate that they are charging. So now this is the official denial. We're going to send them the notice saying that we just don't agree with the pricing that they have in place.
I have a question on this. I'm assuming this resolution's boilerplate? Was it, did somebody send us this, or did we get this from? Okay, yes.
The lawyers that are.
Coalition.
In the coalition during one of the draft.
So I saw a question about the $9.81 million. Is this, is there increase of $9.81 million? Is that to us? The city of Palm Valley?
No.
That's what I thought. I just, it doesn't seem clear in here, so I don't, do we need to tweak that wording a little bit?
No.
This is theirs.
Right, but it says to the city, not just residing in the city, not just the coalition.
And to all customers residing outside.
In the city.
I get you.
Yeah. So that's why I just had a question, because if that's what they're looking at, I understand the intent is to be a part of this coalition. That makes sense to me. I don't know if we need to re.
They do one of these for each jurisdiction, and they just has the total amount.
For everybody?
Because that's the published rate increase.
Yeah, across the board.
That the Texas gas service put out, and then so that's the amount that is.
They're basing it on.
Rejected, and then it sets up this whole negotiation system, the back and forth to get to an agreed upon rate.
Okay. And when does this have to be, when do we have to have this in place to meet the deadline?
Soon as possible.
Now, basically.
So we just go ahead and approve it?
I made a motion to approve the resolution to deny the Texas gas service rate increase that was proposed.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. You have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion, possible action to approve the use of Lone Star Auction website and auction, to auction off city assets as needed. There's no paperwork on this one. There's no contracts. It's actually a free service. And all we have to do is create an account and upload all our information and pictures and whatnot. And we can put anything from cars to any kind of lawnmowers, weed, or anything that the city owns that needs to get disposed of. Chairs, if you wanted to get rid of the chair. These are nice chairs.
No, I know, they're expensive. They're just, I don't know, but it's hard to get in and out of here. It's like a godlike.
So it's a free service. How do they get paid?
They charge the customer. So whoever wins the bid on the items, they get charged a service fee, I think it's like 6%.
Wow. So are there other auction sites or groups that do the same thing?
As far as auction sites?
For similar costs?
I've not found any.
Well, this is great.
For governmental services, I have not found any. So, yeah, it's free.
And then it becomes a full online auction. It's not like they show up here and.
No. The thing is, well, we will park the cars out here. We will put notice on their website saying where the vehicle's located and where it can be looked at. If they want to see the inside, then staff here will escort them out there and show them the interior, turn it on, and that's it. They're not allowed to test drive it or anything like that. If then they decide that they want to bid on that vehicle, then they go and create their own account online, and then they submit their bids. If they win that bid, they'll get notified that they won the bid. They have to pay that company the money. The company turns around, sends us a check for the bid amount, and charges them that service fee. And so once we get that check in our hand, we call the winner of the bid and say, here's your title. It's good to go, and they're out the door.
Nice.
Do other cities use this same?
A lot of cities, school districts, government agencies, yes.
Okay.
Is this the same group HIST is using? I just saw some, they posted something the other day, that they've got, HDISD has an auction coming up.
I know they do a lot of their auctions.
And Hidalgo County does.
They have actual auctioneers that show up, and they.
Okay. All right, well, I think it's a great idea.
All right, so I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the use of Lone Star Auction website to auction off city assets as needed.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, or a second?
A second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 10, discussion and possible action to approve the contract with NM Contracting LLC for the drainage project. I still don't have that contract back. The Texas Water Development Board is reviewing it, and as soon as I get that, I will give it to you all for a review.
So no action at this time?
At this time. Number 11, discussion and possible action to award the advanced meter infrastructure AMI project based on bid submitted. On this one, since there is some proprietary information in the bid, I highly recommend this going to executive session.
I didn't get any.
No, they're sealed.
Okay, seal. Did we get just two?
Three.
Only one?
The other two are RFQs for attorneys, for the alternate judge.
So I feel like we have a couple of things to do in executive session, yes, including that?
Yes.
Okay, so do we move on, or do we go into executive session now and come back?
Yeah, I mean, because they'll have to wait outside.
Right.
So, I mean, I think it's nice, because somebody did mention that the last time.
We can skip it and try to clear out something, some other items, and then go to number 15.
It would be nice, so y'all don't have to sit outside, even though it is nice out there.
Number 11 for right now, and we'll go to number 12. Discussion, possible action to appoint a Palm Valley municipal alternate judge. That one will move it over to 15 as well, because there's two there that need to be reviewed, okay? Number 13, discussion and possible action to ratify the temporary employment of an attorney to represent the city of Palm Valley during legal action brought by the Harlingen Country Club. As you all know, I did have to search around the planet looking for somebody who handled this kind of situations, and the person that we hired is Mark Saucy. He came highly recommended. And in order for him to get paid, I just need you all to approve his hiring for this legal issue.
This is a one-time legal?
It is a one-time issue. If this drags on, then we will continue.
So what do you?
For today and for what's coming up. It's the whole incident, since he's fresh, he's, has knowledge on all that information, he carries through that.
I just have an issue, like, he got let go by several cities, and now we're just hiring him out of the blue. So I have a problem with that.
About let go, but I think it's just politics.
But.
I don't worry. He's one of the lawyers, especially this guy's stuff.
Well, I mean, what other choices do we have?
I couldn't find very many that we had knowledge in this kind of situation.
You got to go up to the center.
And then that's going to be more money.
How much is he charging?
Right.
It's still being negotiated. And any services, if we are successful, he's going to basically include that in his number. If he wins, he's going to have them pay his legal fees.
We need a motion?
Yes.
I mean, you don't have any other suggestions, do you?
No, I don't have any suggestions, but I just, like I said, I.
I just think we have to have someone, since he already is in the game.
Just procedurally, he's got to be the attorney of record on this case already, on behalf of the city of Palm Valley. We have to literally withdraw from the case. If you didn't want to contribute.
Well. Does anyone else want to make this motion? Aye.
I'll make it. I make a motion to ratify the temporary employment, is it Mark Saucy?
Yes.
Is that his name? Mark Saucy to represent the city of Palm Valley during legal action brought by the Harlingen Country Club.
I have a motion on the table. You have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 14, discussion, possible action on the city of Palm Valley ordinance violation on the home located at 218 Palm Valley Drive West.
That's the middle.
That's the Citi Golden. My recommendation to council is we need to get our code enforcement guy and our chief of police to generate some kind of report. And if there is a violation, then it gets ordered to a judge, and a summons be issued. Our judge here, yes, our judge. And that way it can be settled in court.
That homeowner hasn't done anything yet?
Nope, they have not removed it.
Is this the one that met us on Zoom a couple of months ago?
Were they waiting to do something, or they just decided not to do it?
I think they decided.
They already have an attorney?
Sell it, and that'd be someone else's problem.
The other issue right now is another possible violation of city ordinance is they're operating a short-term rental which is an Airbnb. So that's going to be another issue we'll have to bring back to council and review.
And I mentioned this before, but the procedure, so that we can get a municipal lien. The procedure, so that we can get a municipal lien, is to notice them with the violation, with an appearance date, have them appear before the court, let the judge make his ruling. And then if the judge imposes a fine, well, that's something for which we can get a municipal lien. And so my suggestion is, for the code enforcement, is to do it every day until it's taken care of. It's 500 bucks a day at the discretion of the judge. And so if there's two violations, it's 1,000 bucks a day. You do that a couple of weeks, that might get someone's attention.
Yes.
And they can have them heard all on the same court date.
Yeah, I agree, because this has been going on for a while now.
They're waiting us out. That's all they're doing. They're just thinking, we don't have any teeth.
And I'm going to say this, but we have to be consistent in all these code violations. I mean, I know we've been really patient with one person because they had a death, but, I mean, that's another example, and, and, you know.
And that one needs to happen the same way. That's, I know what you're talking about, that's a propane tank that's in violation of, well, it wasn't permitted to be put in place in the first place, and I think I've all measured it, and it's not the proper distancing that we've mentioned in another.
I mean, it installed, I should have never installed it there.
Right. Well, I don't know exactly what happened there, but it was a ton greater.
So anyway, my whole thing is just to be consistent in, and, you know, so who, so this is all the chief? Is the chief here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
He's our law enforcement.
You probably don't like doing this, but I think it's important. That's what keeps our, our community, what it is. I mean, that's what's kept our property values high.
On this issue, he doesn't even have to confront anybody, because there's nobody there.
No, I know, but other little issues.
Ordinarily, you know, you're knocking on a door.
I haven't made contact with them as far as the bed and breakfast goes, and they said that they're not. They had somebody there, tried making contact with that person, but that person was there longer than a month. So as far as that's concerned, that was, we made contact with them probably two months ago, or something like that.
The same people are still there?
The same people are still, I haven't seen the vehicle there, but then I haven't been driving out there a lot either.
Check that online site again.
Yeah. Yeah, there's just been one out of the many that's been, you know, as long as a month. Most of them are, are two to, two to five days or something like that, and there've been a number of them like that.
There's three or four, because there's an agent in our office that pointed out to me. He found them all on Airbnb.
Yeah. Oh, three or four that are in Palm Valley?
Okay.
And we can make contact. Let us, give us the information.
I gave one information to say.
I just can't believe that people Airbnb in the valley.
I know, but I mean, honestly, they like Palm Valley. But if people want to do that, just like you said, if that's something that we want to allow, then.
They're going to have to bring it up to code. They're going to have to start paying probably a hotel motel tax.
Right.
I mean.
An ADA compliant.
Well, if they have been doing it, I mean, we could subpoena the records of their Airbnb and make these folks pay some taxes and put some means in the property.
So, but do we want to do that? I mean, that's my thing. And a lot of, like, the neighbor of that one, or this one, said he's seen a lot of cars.
In and out.
In and out. And, you know, there's the security issue, and now we're just living in kind of crazy times. You never know who might decide to, you know, be in there and.
And it brought your attention. It caught my attention, because it was a whole bunch of cars, and it was like a wild party there. I'm like, what in the world's going on?
Yeah, wild party.
Yeah. Yeah.
We had Steven Tyler here, so.
So the chief and, and our inspector, Louis Ramos, are we?
Yeah, just a documentation report.
Yeah.
You can probably present that to the judge. Then we can send him an official letter from the, he can draft. The one that, I still haven't seen the one that you sent previous staff.
Yeah, I had already drafted them up, just ready to go, but somehow it morphed into one piece of paper from the two that I said, send these two. Here's the first one, here's the second one. It's a lot more. So I'll do it.
So.
Motion, am I correct?
Yes, to take action.
So motion to authorize a police chief and our inspector, Luis Ramos.
To do an inspection as far as a. To do an inspection as far as, uh, um, as far as adhering to, to the ordinance code that we have. And then to, uh, send that, uh, results on over to, to our municipal judge, is that correct? You need more?
We just need to issue citation for violations of ordinance.
All right, all right, issue those citations, all right.
I have a motion, I have a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 15, executive session, take here. 11, 12?
Right, just 11 and 12, right?
13.
What about 16?
What about 16, about the secretary?
Oh, yeah, and 16, we can discuss that in executive session. I need a motion?
Make a motion, go into executive session, do any to.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, it is 6:32, we are entering executive session. All right, we are coming out of executive session, it is 7:31. And on item number 12, discussion, possible action to appoint a Palm.
11.
11, I'm sorry. 11, discussion, possible action to award the advanced meter infrastructure AMI project based on bid submitted. And as you all know, we only had one, um, bid submitted. And that was provided by Aqua Works Pipe and Supply Company out of Brownsville and Edinburgh. And the amount total on that bid, for the record, is 413,017 dollars and 33 cents. Do we have any questions? Go ahead.
I make a motion that we award the advanced meter infrastructure project to, uh, Aqua Works. And, uh, for the total of 413,017 dollars and 33 cents.
I have a motion.
And, uh, um.
Pending clarification. Yeah.
Clarification of the.
I'm just trying to think of. So, uh, and a, as well as?
So.
Pending the.
Pending clarification of the installation cost.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and perhaps receiving bids on, uh, installation as well of these, of these meters.
Is that reasonable?
What was the motion?
Yeah.
Well, we have to, so the motion was to accept Aqua Works for the amount presented.
Yeah.
Pending clarification on installation and possible bids to pay for that installation.
Correct.
Did it concern the general?
I wanted to include the fund that it's going to be paid for.
Oh, it's going to be, yeah, you have to state where, which fund is coming.
And paid out of the, it's the water.
What?
It's not the water fund.
Special fund.
Water capital replacement.
Water capital replacement fund.
Water Capital Replacement Fund.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion. Or your second? Second, okay, I have a motion and a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now we're on number 12, discussion and possible action to appoint a Palm Valley municipal or alternate judge based on the request or qualifications submitted. And as you all know, I had two different bids. Two different RFQs, sorry, applicants. One of them being Juanita Jaimez. Second one, Sandra Sanchez Diaz. Any questions?
Make a motion based on the information presented by both RFQs to award this to Juanita Jaimez for the position of alternate municipal judge for the city of Palm Valley.
Requested change so that you appoint versus.
Thank you, appoint, thank you. So I, I make the motion to appoint Juanita Jaimez as the alternate municipal judge for the city of Palm Valley.
I second that.
I have a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, all right. And number 16? We're gonna set that one aside?
Make, make a motion that we table, um, uh, uh, item number 16 and, uh, till ne- next meeting, next month.
I have a motion, I have a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And consent agenda, number 17, chief, you have anything?
I told Jason this sometime back, I knew this was gonna happen. The brush, are we like?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have.
They're like people just throwing out.
Oh, yeah, it's getting out of hand.
Four contacts this morning.
And that huge one at Delaware.
Yeah, that one, I, I know the owner, man, I tried to reach out to him, he has a handy. I don't know about getting in touch with it.
It's just getting it out at the right time? What are we talking about?
They're putting it out like.
It's once a month, so they come it out.
On the Sundays.
Primera had, when they installed it, is that people like just turn it out and wait two or three weeks.
Yeah, but it, but it just needs to be out there in a timely fashion.
Picture, ticket, we'll come see.
Well, I made contact with three people today and I gave them the, uh, the calendar.
Okay.
So now they know November 13th, the 7th, or 6th, the next, so they're gonna remove what they have on the street.
By the way, this, I put a box that completely covers my blue garbage cans so they cannot be seen. And Amazon does sell them, so if anyone's complaining, maybe someone on the plaza circle that their garbage cans out, but it's blue. Is there available?
All right, okay, you got that in, all right.
All right, nice.
Good job, there, Chendo.
We'll hire special counsel, special counsel to, uh, to prosecute that case.
There you go. All right, Chendo, you have anything? You had a big water leak the other day, what was that all about?
I had two, two, one in Guam and then I had one in Chandra, that was a 10 inch, uh.
Wow.
And I've been getting one of them because it all messes pipe and to find a plant to go over that is.
And not cave it in?
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah, I noticed one day it was like really trickling out and.
The bird bait.
All right, Jose, you have anything for us?
Uh, nothing to.
Remind me of his animals things today before I leave. All right.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and number 18?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I second.
I have a second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 7:39.